Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May Wallingford Board of Education Meeting. And we'll start by asking to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Lavell, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso? Ms. Lavell?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Raciom?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto? Seven members present and voting.
Perfect, thank you. We'll go to item four, which is our Student Board Reps, and we'll start with Lyman Hall. Samuel? Not here. It's tough, it's the end of the year and everybody's busy. Oh, he is here, oh my goodness. You were way, I'm so sorry. How silly of me. Welcome, how's things going?
They're good.
You just had prom.
Yep, we had prom on Friday.
Right. I don't want to get you out of your order, so I'll be quiet.
Yeah, so last month, I wasn't able to be here. We were at, we were in Atlanta for Deca, the International Deca Conference, and that was a lot of fun. We got to speak with some cool people. There was the founder of Men's Warehouse there, and he was able to talk to the kids and stuff. It was a really cool experience. There was over, I think, 20,000 people there, students and advisors and stuff like that. So it was a cool experience. And on the first of May, Lyman Hall had their "I've Got Plans" Day, where students were apparel to represent what they were doing after high school. And then right after that was our play on May 4th, 5th, and 6th, which was a huge hit. Then we had our junior prom at Zandry's on May 13th. And in the past couple of weeks, we've had a couple of office hours where students were able to meet with teachers and kind of finalize what they were doing for the end of the year. We've also started, the Culinary Arts Department at Lyman Hall has debuted their culinary kiosk, which is a rolling snack cart that is sold to teachers during the school day. So they've opened up a new business at Lyman Hall for teachers. The other day, students also had an assembly, seniors for graduation. And May 23rd was Lyman Hall's Awards Night in the auditorium at Lyman Hall. Last week, we had our Voag Fair, which was a huge success, with over 3,000 people, guests coming in over the course of three days. We had our senior prom on May 25th, this past Friday. And students in Lyman Hall's marching band and color guard marched in the Memorial Day Parade, which was yesterday morning.
And did a phenomenal job.
Yep, for sure. Tomorrow night is our Scholarship Night at Lyman Hall. Thursday, the 31st, students, seniors will be heading to Holiday Hill for student, for senior outing, while freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will be holding their class elections at Lyman Hall. And in the next coming weeks, students will be preparing for upcoming final exams. Varsity Scholar Night will be on June 13th, and graduation, of course, is on June 22nd, as well as project graduation. And moving on to some sports updates, our girls lacrosse team had their senior night at Jonathan Law on May 17th. Our boys lacrosse team had their senior night on the 22nd. Baseball and softball both had states, their first states games today. As far as track goes, they're training for their state tournament, which is this weekend, and it's kind of been going on a little bit here and there. Our golf team hosted their Shein match at Traditions Golf Course last week. Our boys tennis team is in their second round of the state tournament. And our girls tennis team hosted their senior night last week at Delilah Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Like I said, lots going on.
Yep, for sure.
Great. From Mark T. Sheen, Rajan Doring, come on up, Rajan, how you doing tonight? Good.
In May, we had the end of our spring regular sports seasons, and our postseason's are now underway. A big thank you to Mr. Ross for taking pictures at all of the events. Our girls track team was the SEC East Sectional Regional Champions for the first time in school history. We had many All-League and All-State honors. On May 3rd, we had the NGSS exam for our students. We had Teacher Appreciation Week from May 6th through the 11th. AP exams were from the 7th through the 25th, extended due to the unexpected days off. Our spring concert was on May 9th, junior prom on May 12th. Our APR students had their art show at the Hubcap on the 15th and 16th. We had CNA testing on the 22nd and 23rd. Academic awards night on the 24th. Our senior outing and class elections for the other three classes on the 25th. On the 31st, we have our Poetry Slam and our Music Awards Banquet at 6:00 PM. Looking out into June, we have CNA pinning ceremonies on June 4th at 7:00 PM. The board is invited. June 5th, we have Spring and Senior Sports Awards, 7:00 PM. Board is invited. June 7th, the seniors have their ice cream social and yearbook signing event. At night, we will have the 8th grade sports information night on the 7th as well. On the 12th, we have our Celebration of Excellence during school, and the Varsity Scholar Award Ceremony at night at 6:00 PM, to which the board is invited. Final exams are from the 18th through the 21st, with it being the 14th through the 19th for the seniors, as there is graduation rehearsal on the 20th through the 22nd, with the last day of school being on the 22nd. Graduation at 6:00 PM. The board is invited. And on June 29th is the last day of school for counselors and department chairs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Item five, Presentation and Awards. Dr. Mensah?
Thank you for coming this evening. We have several awards this evening. Tonight is one of the best nights of all the year at the Board of Education meeting because we are able to honor so many students. We know that it's a very busy time of year, though, also, so we're going to be naming a lot of students who unfortunately couldn't be here because of other commitments, but we want to make sure that they are publicly recognized, that if they are able to tune in at a later date, they could hear their name being announced for the honor that they've received, because we feel it's very important to make sure that we give recognition to all of our students. I would also be remiss if we didn't recognize the fact that the families involved of all of these students are so important to us, because your commitment to your children help us and help them, most importantly, be successful. In addition, our staff, our teachers, our administrators, all of our staff throughout the system are so proud. And I know that every year when we have these awards, the staff feels that pride because they've seen their children, your children, succeed. And I think that's important. We are such a community of learners and a community that truly cares about the success of all of our students. So I do want to start by first sharing with you the names of our CAE student leadership awards. CAE is the Connecticut Associations of Boards of Education, and Ms. McKay is actually on the Board of Directors. And it is actually, each year, the CAE allows us to recognize students at the middle school and high school level for their work as leaders, as good citizens, as strong citizens in our community. And it allows us to be able to recognize them for that leadership and hopefully encourage them to continue that leadership as they grow through our system, from the middle school to the high school and from the high school beyond. So it is my pleasure to recognize these students, and I'd like to call up, if I may, I know Mr. Snyder, I saw Mr. Snyder, if you could come on up. I would love to have you come up and help us introduce our students from Dag Hammer Schall Middle School.
Okay, from Dag Hammer Schall Middle School, happy to announce this award goes to Paige Loughlin. Our next recipient is, for the same award, Casey McDancy.
Unfortunately, tonight, both of our administrators from Moran were not able to be with us, but I would like to call up. And Vincent, I'm going to apologize for your last name, so I apologize. I'm going to have you come up and actually pronounce it for me to make sure that I get this right, so that if anybody's watching, other than your parents right now and your brother, I don't want to mess it up. So Vincent, could you share with us your last name?
Etienza.
Etienza, okay, very nice. So from James H. Moran Middle School. All right, next year, we need to get students I pronounce last names of. That would be criteria number one, if you're watching at the middle school. No, just kidding, just joking. I should probably review these ahead of time, and I apologize for not doing that. So Nicole, is Nicole here? Nicole, come on up. Oh, wow! Yes, yes. All right, congratulations. Congratulations again. And now I'll invite Ms. Duthy, if you could come on up.
And receiving the CAE Leadership Award from Shein High School, Rajan Daring.
And last but not least, Mr. Corso?
All right, first from Lyman Hall, we have Berditt DeNegris.
All right, I'll let you announce the next two. How about that?
I don't know.
Well, because they're...
Oh, well, yes, that sounds great. Okay, so student, yes, this is very appropriate. So Student Board of Education Reps, our gentleman that were just up here, we'll start with Sam from Lyman Hall. Come on down. Thank you. You did an amazing job. Sam Dorte did a great job all year long. It's a commitment to come to all our board meetings once a month and to report, so we really appreciate that. And of course, from Shein is Rajan Doring. And again, thank you, Rajan. Apparently, people think I bite.
Yep. The next group of students, I had the pleasure of enjoying lunch with them and their families. The Superintendent's Association, South Central Connecticut Superintendent's Association, each year gives out awards to students at the middle school and high school, again, for leadership, citizenship, academic ability, and well-rounded individuals. So we were fortunate enough to honor them the end of April at Cascade for a nice lunch. So tonight, we just wanted to publicly recognize these students also. We have Miguel Rodriguez from Dag Hammer Schall. And we put a picture inside, remember we took that picture and that, it came out, well, you guys came out really good, but you could wipe me out if you like, or just put a face of somebody you like on it, I mean, in the middle, whatever, it's okay. And from Lyman Hall, we have Josh Camputaro. And from Mark T. Sheen High School, Samantha Ionon. And from Mark T. Sheen High School, we have Jacob Oleano. And last but not least, every year, our association gives out scholarships to students that are aspiring to become educators in the future. And we were fortunate enough, and actually, over the last several years, we've had a lot of students from Wallingford being recognized. And this year, we have Christine Thorpe from Lyman Hall. All right, now, I'm going to call back up Ms. Duthy, if I may. And Ms. Duthy's going to share with you the names of students who received SAT distinction. This is for our seniors who received this award.
All right, the students that we're honoring tonight, all of them were not able to be here, but we'll go through the list. And this is for students who scored 650 or higher on either the SAT or SAT II exams. Earl Nelson Abayo. Haley Del Grego. Hayden French. Benjamin Gardner. Adrian Gosseka. Matthew Merrick. Thomas Skolski. Joseph Wommelstorf. And Emily Zemba. Again, congratulations.
All right, from Lyman Hall, we have Emily Austin. Anne Marie Boyle. Stoney Brooks. Ashley Buchanan. Nicole Sislow. Steven Gagni. Destiny Guyana Lewis. Jack Gaynor. Camille Henry. Blake Jandro. Avery LaChance. Holly Ann Lau. Rebecca Mailhot. Andrew Maschroni. Not let, not yet. Almost. Kendra Moore. Lindsay Navikas. Brian Olivera. Sierra Rich. Erin Stone. Erin Stone. Ashley Whittier. And Daniel Yang. Congratulations to everybody.
Okay, the next two recipients, we were very fortunate. Every year, there's a Townwide Spelling Bee. And it involves our 3-5 schools, as well as our middle schools, and also Holy Trinity. This year, we not only took home a repeat winner for first place, two years in a row, but also second place. So I would like to invite up our two winners of the Townwide Spelling Bee. Chloe Benson from Dag Hammershall Middle School, and Isling Morris from Rock Hill. So this is Chloe. Chloe won first place last year, and she repeated this year. You gotta come back, obviously, for the year, next year, right? You have one more, because you're, no, you're eighth grade already? No. You're sixth grade, you have two years. So that's what I was thinking, you could be a four-peat, like the Yankees were. Because the Yankees are the best baseball team, but the thing is, it's all good, it's all good. So congratulations. Oh, what was your winning word? I forgot, what was the winning, well, you were, you were...
I was a judge.
Yeah, I don't remember what the word was, what was it?
It was sword.
Sword.
Sword? That was really, yeah, huh. Alrighty. Alright, well, we're gonna just let that one go. Alright. We also now have Invention Convention winners. We are fortunate again to have several students, seven students actually placed to go to the National Convention. And so we're very proud of our Invention Convention award recipients. We have an incredible event that takes place at Oakdale, or I should say, for TV Land, Toyota Presents the Oakdale Theater. Because we want to make sure, right, Mr. Tursey? We want to make sure we get that ad coverage in there, even though I'm not getting any residuals, but Toyota, if you'd like to lend a car or two to our fleet of no cars at this time, we could then have a fleet, we'd be happy to take any Toyotas to help transport students, staff, or others around our district. So just a free little announcement there. So I didn't know, is Ms. Rifa, yes, I thought I saw you back there, proud, almost parent kind of of these children, so come on up, please. Ms. Karen Rifa. Karen is the step teacher, gifted and talented teacher at the elementary schools, and we're very fortunate to have her in that role. She's done a remarkable job over the many years that she's been in the position, and she's really taken the program to another level, and the Invention Convention has grown each year, I'm proud to say, over the last nine years. And it's been exciting to see this happen. I know that we had it at Fritz Elementary School to start, and it started getting a little crazy there, and then moved to Sheehan, and then we had our connection because of Oakdale High, or Toyota Presents Oakdale High. We had that opportunity to develop a relationship with that theater, and they were able to allow us to use their space, which has become our home, and it's been a much more flexible space, but because the numbers have grown so much under Karen's leadership, as well as the middle school, who's been involved, and even some high school. So, we didn't forget about you, Audrey, don't worry. How could I forget about Audrey? So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Rifa to read off the names, and we'll invite the students up.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Menzo, and it's because of Dr. Menzo that we do have Oakdale, and so I want to thank you so much, because that is a beautiful, beautiful space to hold such a premier event, and we have actually become one of the premier events in Connecticut. So, just a really, really quick few thoughts about how these seven students got here. They, this journey started back in January, when we started our local convention, and we have a few participants here. For the step students in my program, they, this is a class requirement for them, so they have to do this as part of their classwork. But it is open to all students in grades three through five, as an after-school or home project for them. It is offered to all the middle school students through an after-school club, and it is now part of the CIC as a high school program as well. So it really does span three through 12 now, across the state. And in some towns, they do have K through two, there's just, there's only one me. So it doesn't go K2 yet. So it began in January, and the students started with a local convention, and we had over 130 participants. From those 130, 25 of them were selected to go on to the Southern Regionals, where they competed with students in the southern region of Connecticut. From those 25, 15 were selected to go up to the state convention, where they competed with other students around the state of Connecticut. And from those 15, these seven were selected and asked to go on to the National Convention. And in order to do that, they had to have gained some recognition at the state convention. Whether they were table winners or multiple award winners, they all received some recognition. Seven is a huge number for one town to be sending. Most towns are sending one, two, maybe three. For Wallingford to be sending seven is a huge accomplishment, and I couldn't be more proud of these seven students. Spanning third grade through ninth grade, we have a cross-section of step students, independent inventors, all four 3-5 schools, we have our high school. We had a small percentage of middle school students, so we don't have the middle schools going this year, but that's just this year. Last year, we had middle school students who not only went, but scored very, very well. So we're gonna call the students up by, I guess we'll go by this. So from, okay, great, from Mary Fritz, we have fourth grader Katie Russell. Katie invented something called the Power Soul. And we'll all be traveling to Dearborn, Michigan this Thursday, for three days, to the Henry Ford Museum. We have, from Mary Fritz, fifth grader Grace Moriarty. Grace invented wind, and I'm not even gonna attempt to tell you what that acronym stands for. Tell us.
Stands for Watt Interchanging Nebulizer Device.
Awesome. From Parker Farms, we have Patrick Jimetti, our third grader. And his fan club. Patrick invented the groom door. From Pond Hill, we have fifth grader Ty Holloway. Ty invented the boys' hockey pads, an invention to protect hockey players, which he is. Congratulations, Ty. From fourth grade at Rock Hill, we have Ella Cranmer. Ella created every mother's dream, the laundry lifter. And also from Rock Hill in fifth grade, we have Thomas Barron. Thomas's invention is the Cosco Intelligente. It's a helmet that is very smart. It's a bike helmet, to make sure that you don't ride off without your helmet. And finally, we have our high school student. From ninth grade, Audrey Larson, who invented Safe Kids. And, don't go away. Kid stands for?
Kevlar Cellular Nano-Crystal AR500 Steel Instant Defense System.
Yeah, that. And just a few words about Audrey here. Not only does Audrey invent, Audrey sits on the Board of Directors for the Connecticut Invention Convention. Audrey's been an independent inventor since sixth grade, fourth grade. And she is an inspiration to all of you little inventors over there, you young inventors. Because of this program, Audrey's journey now is bringing her to a career path in engineering. So I hope you're real proud of that. As we've become a STEM town, this process is really helping students to find their path on the way to engineering. So if your student is interested, please encourage them to invent, to take those ideas and those dreams and make something of it. And you guys up here, once you leave fifth grade, do those independent after-school things at middle school and keep on inventing, because all it takes is motivation and hard work. You didn't get here because of luck, you got here because you all worked really hard, and you deserve this honor, you deserve this trip to Dearborn, and I couldn't be more proud of all of you.
Thank you, guys, and congratulations. I do want to say again, thank you to Ms. Rifa and our two teachers, Mr. M. Grayson and Mr. Bacacas at the middle school. We're very fortunate in Wallingford, and I don't think families truly appreciate the fact that we're one of very few districts in our area that still have gifted and talented programming for students in elementary and middle school. Many districts have had to cut those programs for other services, and we've made a real commitment to those programs, and I think we're very fortunate, and I would like to thank the board, and I'd like to thank all of our staff for supporting these opportunities that were challenging students at all ends and in between, all of our students. And as Ms. Rifa said, this program is open to all students, so it's not just about gifted and talented students that have potentially passed a certain assessment, it's open for all students. So if you have children that are, if you're watching this at home, or if you're in the audience and you want to get them involved, it's a great opportunity for them. It's also good for the family, because you have to have a lot of conversation and discussion and processing, so it brings you together as well. We're getting there, near the end, but we have, I want to do two more staff, I want to switch over to two staff members, and then I want to conclude with our valedictorians of Lyman Hall and Sheehan High School, because I think they need that special privilege of being the last of the evening. So, next, we have a teacher who's being recognized, and I don't know if she's here, actually, to be honest, but I'll mention it. Our teacher being recognized is the Connecticut Association Secondary School Science Teaching Award in Excellence for her teaching and her work in science, and it's going to Ms. Crystal LeVoy, who is science teacher and department head at Lyman Hall High School. And the next recipient, and I think I saw Ms. Belizzi, correct? If you could come on up. Ms. Belizzi is the principal of Pond Hill Elementary School, and as of mutually agreed-upon date, when her superintendent lets her leave that position, she will be coming, become the new Assistant Superintendent for Personnel in Wallingford Public Schools. So, congratulations to Ms. Belizzi on that as well. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. Okay, so Dave and I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our, my school psychologist, Melissa Moran, for going above and beyond on Tuesday, May 15th. So as you may recall, on May 15th, it was the day that the storm had come through, and Melissa was still working at Pond Hill School at that time, and when the warning came through, she got the warning, she grabbed our emergency support plan and rushed to help the YMCA staff, who still had some students there with her. So she really took charge and helped them find a special location for the staff and the students to stay while the storm passed. And then once the storm passed, she had an opportunity to stay with the Y and call all the parents, to make sure that the parents had an opportunity to know that the kids were safe, and when they could get there, she stayed with them until about 8:30 at night, making sure everyone was safe. And then Dave was able to get to the school and ran into Melissa and said that she had really provided a lot of support, not only to the YMCA staff there, the students, the parents that came, but then also helped our YMCA staff and cleaning crew, because some of them had sustained some substantial damage from some of the trees that had fallen on their cars while the storm had passed. So we just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for everything that you did. So thank you, Melissa, come on up.
And Dave, Dave, could you just stay up here for a minute? This is Dave Fries, he's a Buildings and Grounds, Crew Chief, Crew Chief. I always want to give him a different title, probably, yeah, I probably shouldn't, because we're negotiating, so. But the thing is, I do want, while Dave is here, I want to thank Dave and all of the crew in maintenance for all of their hard work, not just during this past storm, but throughout this whole year, starting in the fall, with our issues that we had. Mother Nature has not been too kind to us this year, but the goodness that we have in people like Dave has come through in that department. So I just want to say thank you. I know on behalf of all the staff, administrators, teachers, paraeducators, everyone, parents and families, you've always put the students first, and getting those early morning phone calls, having your superintendent set off the alarm at a school, but we knew it worked. That's how we knew Pond Hill had a phone service this past storm, but that's okay. But doing all those things, and doing it with a smile, and checking in on us to making sure, making sure we're doing well, really makes us very proud to have all of you, so thank you so much. Alright, so now, we're down to our final two awards, and I think unfortunately, I think one student is unable to make it this evening, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm going to at this time. And I think, is it Lisette? Lisette can't make it, but you want to come up at least, and you can take this back to her. So Lisette Donowal is the valedictorian of the class of 2018 for Lyman Hall High School. And Ms. Duffy? We'll have you do the honors.
And our number-one ranked student at Sheehan High School, Nora Keela.
I just, I just have to share something with you about Nora. Nora traveled two years ago to China, and several others, and Jupiter meeting a woman from the US Department of Commerce, Anne. Ms. Evans is the US Department of Commerce representative, and we were able to go to the actual embassy in China, her assistants, and she met Nora, and I think Nora's, Nora asked her like 50,000 questions about how to be successful, what did you do to be suc- Nora's not intense at all. That's why we don't get along at all whatsoever. But Nora asked all these questions, and I remember Anne walking away, coming up to me and saying, "Oh my gosh, do you have a dynamo there?" And we do. And so we're so proud of you, I could not be more proud. And I'm gonna see Anne on June 12th, and I can't wait to tell her. So, congratulations. So needless to say, we have a lot to be proud of in Wallingford Public Schools, and these represent some of the many students. And these represent some of the many students throughout the year that we recognize for so many different accomplishments, be it in athletics, academics, extracurricular activities. We are so fortunate and so blessed to have so many students and families who support them in achieving such great success. It makes us all proud to be here, to work with your children and work with your families, to see them rise to such high heights and exceed expectations that they might have set for themselves or others might have set for them. We know that they can continue to surpass those without a doubt. And I would just say to the students, no matter how young or old you may be, don't let anybody set the expectations for you. Set them for yourself and always set them at least three to five levels higher than you could ever imagine you attaining, because my money is on the fact that you will exceed that and go even farther than you ever thought. So congratulations. I'm going to, Ms. McKay?
Thank you so much, Dr. Menzo. Obviously, I want to echo Dr. Menzo's sentiment, but on behalf of the Board of Ed, we want to say congratulations to all the students that we honored tonight. You know, their success is never done in a vacuum. It's moms, dads, aunts, uncles, grandparents, extended family. It's teachers, it's principals, it's psychologists, social workers, paras, everybody, custodial staff, everybody that is in our schools contribute to the success of our students. And they couldn't be as successful as they are without all those contributions. And we, on behalf of Board of Ed, are so grateful for the commitment that you all make individually to make this collective group that is, you know, far greater than the individual parts. Thank you, thank you. And that's what, you know, that's what fuels us on Board of Ed, is when we see the successes of our students and our families, it makes us proud. And I thank you all for all your contributions. And I echo Dr. Menzo's sentiment that I have complete confidence in these students being very, very successful for their entire lives. So I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Though I'm sure you all want to stay for this riveting meeting we're going to have, I will give everybody like a minute or two, if you want to leave. This would be your golden opportunity. Thank you, everybody. Oh, that's too bad. But she's okay? Yeah. Great. Who gets to talk to us? Oh, how wonderful. How exciting.
That's insane.
Yeah, my niece, my niece is my husband's brother. It's his birthday.
So they actually, that's right. His grand, his grandson.
Grandson will have the same birthday.
Same birthday. That's, well, it's so funny, because I have a niece.
And yesterday was my husband's birthday. So I'm trying to buy her which is going to be.
So I have a niece that is due on her father's birthday, August 13th. So we'll see if it happens. Yeah. The same situation. That's pretty cool.
My next-door neighbor, my son, one of my sons, my next-door neighbor, my son, Basmia, and his son was born on his birthday.
Wow. That's funny.
So father and son have the same birthday.
That's funny.
And it was August, Friday the 13th.
Oh, no. Oh, boy. That's wrong. All right, let's see what we got going on here. Okay, continuing on with our meeting, I'll move on to Item 6, which is a public question and answer period. Any questions from the audience? Our vast audience that eliminated us. That's all good. Okay, I'm assuming none. Can I get a motion to go into executive session for, we have five items. E1, Discussion Regarding the Contract for the Business Manager. E2, Discussion of Acceptance of Retirements. E3, Discussion of Acceptance of Resignations. E4, Discussion of Approval of Leaves of Absences. And E5, Discussion of Appointment of Candidates to Teaching Positions.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Moving along on our agenda is Item 7, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to accept Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2.3?
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Moving along on our agenda is Item 7, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to accept Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2.3?
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Moving along on our agenda is Item 7, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to accept Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2.3?
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Moving along on our agenda is Item 7, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to accept Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2.3?
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Moving along on our agenda is Item 7, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to accept Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2.3?
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Moving along on our agenda is Item 7, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to accept Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2.3?
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Moving along on our agenda is Item 7, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to accept Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2.3?
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Moving along on our agenda is Item 7, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to accept Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2.3?
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. I'm sorry, excuse me. Item 8, Items Were Moved From the Consent Agenda. Of course, we didn't have any, so none to discuss. Nine correspondents?
Yes, we have one donation to give our thanks for. We'd like to thank Ventura's Restaurant for donating taco, yeah, excuse me, taco bar for the international celebration at Lyman Hall. This gift is valued at $500.
Great. Okay, Item 10, Our Committee Reports, starting with 10.1, ACES Representative, Mrs. Levatt.
Yes, I was unable to attend the meeting this past month.
Okay, no problem. 10.2, Unagreed Magnet, School Steering Committee, Mrs. Latour.
I was also unable to attend last month's, but do you have the minutes that were provided for that meeting? Sure. So the principal gave an update just regarding the events that were occurring at that school. And then they did a budget update as well. So the budget had been previously approved, and they were answering some questions from the audience members in regards to line items of the budget. And then they did a facility update discussing their particular lease with the Hampton Board of Education and discussion surrounding that.
Great.
There will be no more meetings this year until the fall of next school year.
Perfect. Thank you. School-to-career business thing, Dr. Menzo?
Yes, our next meeting is Friday, June 8th.
Okay, that's easy. PTAC update?
So our last PTAC meeting of the year occurred on the night of the storm, so our attendance was low.
Yeah.
But we did still have the meeting, and we reviewed some open items, solidified some end-of-year communications that will be forthcoming in regards to summer reading and social-emotional learning and the planning for the Parent Choice Awards. So it was a productive meeting, and we look forward to restarting in the fall.
Great, thank you. 10.5, Plan of Conservation Development, Mr. Reynolds.
Nothing new to report.
No, okay, perfect. Moving right along on these committee reports, Food Service Strategic Plan, Mr. Mencher.
Yes, fortunately, we had a similar situation. We had a meeting scheduled, the 15th, the day of the storm.
Right.
And we did not get together, as you know, as a team.
Yes.
But some of the items that we were going to talk about were the lunch charge procedure to update that, and that's been on the website for a while. And the breakfast program update, we were going to go over on where we are with that, and we were also going to update strategic plans and goals. And most likely, we will be reporting out in the fall.
That's fine.
I'm not sure if we could get together in June.
Perfect, thank you. I'm going to lump 10.7 and 10.8, which are stage lighting and renovation updates and four-school window replacement. I don't know if you.
Yes, no, everything's moving forward as planned. Mr. Dipatul unfortunately couldn't be here this evening.
No problem.
But he is still working with the both high schools. They went through the schedule, and they're looking at making sure there's no disruptions to other environments, as well as also the middle schools. And any school that's been working on the window project that's been moving forward. We did get some feedback on plans, and so we're hoping that, the big thing was we want to get ahead of the product, because we want to make sure we could order it in time.
Sure.
So I think we're in a good place.
Okay, great, thank you. Item 11 is Old Business. I do not believe we have any to discuss. Item 12, Instructional Committee, Mrs. Purcell, you're up.
Okay, 12.1, Mastery-Based Learning Update.
So our committee work is winding down for the year, and the effort will be to determine, finally, our next steps for next school year. And again, our goal will be to communicate those as we did last year with an end-of-year communication that went home to all families, as well as went out to all faculty and staff with just the progress that was made this year as it relates to our work with standards and indicators, habits of work, et cetera, and then what to look for next year. That way, everyone has a good idea of next steps forward in the process and can look for those things at the start of the school year in the fall.
All right, 12.2, Discussion of the IDA Grant Application?
This is pretty much just a formality that we have to, we basically put it on the agenda to let you know that we are applying for the IDA grant. We do this every year. We don't traditionally go through it, because it is, it's, basically, it's a process of reviewing our programs like we've done in the past and moving the money forward in allocated areas to support staff and students. But if you have any questions, I know Ms. Klemazuski was the person who put together the grant. She'd be happy to take them either this evening or at another time.
Any questions? Sorry, I turned my mic off. I know it says, "Discussion and Possible Approval," but you don't need an approval this evening, do you?
You do take, you do take approval, so you do.
Okay, so you do, you need that this evening.
Just, it's basically, again, it's required that we have the approval. It's already been submitted.
Right.
But if the state would often come back and just make sure the Board of Education approved it.
Not a problem. All right, so any other discussion? Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the adoption, or approve the 2018, 2019 IDA Grant application?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The motion passes. All right, next, 12.3, can we do 12.3 all the way down to 12.6 together?
Correct. This is the second read for these policies and regulations, so 12.3 through 12.6 were presented at our last instructional meeting. I have some clerical edits from Ms. Levatt that I will bring back to my office, and you'll see these again at next month's meeting.
Okay. Any questions, discussions? Okay, then we move on, I assume. 12.7, Discussion and Approval to Apply for Federal Adult Education Funds, English Language Acquisition, and Integrated English Literacy in Civics Education, American Living to Collaborate Endeavor.
Yes, and Ms. Govan, the Director of Adult Education, is here tonight just to answer any questions. Again, these are grants that we have applied for in the past.
That's right.
They're continuation of these services that have been in place.
Yes, that's correct, Dr. Menzo. And just like Dr. Menzo mentioned, we need the approval of the board. I have already submitted the, because the due date was last week, so I did submit all the grants, the application and the proposal. So if you have any questions, these are very valuable services through these grants, because what we found is our community members, adults who attend these, especially the Family Literacy Program, we have a parent session, parent and child together. So they get books that they take home and they read to the students. So they, that's a K through 2 students, and they actually get to have the same curriculum that those teachers have in classroom. So we were lucky and fortunate enough to hire a teacher who retired from Highland, Ms. Roseanne Billedeau. I don't know, many people know her. So she is the person who teaches, she does all modalities, and we use iPads for the students. This grant enables that. And the other grant, the Workforce Readiness Grant, also helps anybody, not just the CDP, the credit diploma students, but all adults who want to, who come in through our door asking for any help. We've had a couple of adults who just walked in this morning, but they're not attending our classes, but they came to help work on their resume, get a format. So we have a counselor who works with them, showing them the career pathways, and we use career cruising. We do not use Navions, because this is a more, it's a more simpler program that suits the needs of our adults here. And American Living, the civics course that we offer in conjunction with SCOW, and we collaborate with We Care, too. They are, you know, truly recent immigrants who want to learn all about our American culture, and some of them go on to learn all the courses for citizenship. Then, actually, two weeks ago, we brought those students from American Living and Family Literacy to meet with the mayor, and the mayor was ecstatic. He spoke to them. They had questions about the pool, that was the first question, of course. And they, he brought them everywhere. That is when I learned that was, the quilt there was made by one of the adult education teachers with all his ESL students. I didn't know that. So I learned that from the mayor. So they, they were so excited, they took pictures with the mayor, every one of them. So this grant provides the opportunity for these parents to venture out and do things that they normally would not do. They were taken to Ellis Island last, not this Saturday, Saturday before, so they could, you know, understand the whole immigration and the path to citizenship. So these, these funds are valuable assets to our community.
Any questions? Go ahead. Kami, Ms. Rocha.
Mrs. Govan, on the Family Literacy Grant, well, actually, on any of them, are there wait lists? Are we able to service all of the parents and families?
Yes, because it's K through 2, we do have just a finite number of students. Sometimes transportation is a problem, so we have arranged through SCOW, and we have a wonderful helper right here. He, he has brought students, you know, from SCOW to the schools. So no, there's no waitlist, and it's rolling admission. So if they walked into our district and they found out about this program sometime in November, we still take them.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? I was just going to, from a procedural standpoint, if, I'm wondering if we could do 12.7 through 12.10? Right. I'm comfortable with that. You okay with that? Okay. So I make a motion to approve the grants from 12.7 through 12.10?
Thank you. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, they all pass. Okay, 12.11, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the contract proposed by Dr. Menzo for the Business Manager.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Okay, abstentions? All right, passes. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Ed accepts with regret the retirement of Kimberly Shoemaker effective June 30th, 2018. Kimberly Shoemaker has been a home economics teacher, a science teacher, a family consumer science teacher since September 1983, for a total of 35 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Any comments or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Nancy Manning, effective June 30th, 2018. Nancy Manning has been an elementary teacher since August 1991, for a total of 27 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? I'd like to make one. Nancy Manning was a colleague of mine since I've been in Wallingford teaching, a wonderful teacher. And I have to say that when she was at Highland with us, she was one of those teachers that you could have sent any child to her, and she could pull the best out of those kids. you could have sent any child to her and she could pull the best out of those kids. It's very, I'm sad that she's leaving, but I know it's well deserved. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Karen Ripa effective June 30, 2018. Karen Ripa has been a pre-kindergarten and elementary teacher since 1988. She became a step teacher in 2008 for a total of 30 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Any discussion or question? Okay, I have to say something. Are you gonna go? I'll go first. I just have to say, Mrs. Ripa was a colleague and a very good friend. She was also the Wallingford Teacher of the Year. She's been a member of team, a master mentor, a portfolio scorer. She teaches our, she works with our new teachers on professionalism. She's been involved in the Sheen Band, District Plays, Invention Convention, we saw tonight, the variety show. In fact, she was in the first variety show at Highland and she played Ken when I played Barbie. It was awesome. But she is going to be missed very much and I'm very happy to hear that she's going to stay involved in a lot of the things that she's planning on doing. Dr. Menzo?
I would just say, all three people who are retiring this evening, it is unfortunate because we're losing many years of service to our district, but they certainly deserve this opportunity to enjoy themselves and get started on their future endeavors. Ms. Ripa, as we saw this evening, it's a credit to her, the work that she's done with Invention Convention through the Gifted and Talented Program and STEP, and expanding that to open it to all students. And as Ms. Purcell just said, the fact is that she does much more than that, working with the Color Guard at Sheen High School, working with the Drama Club on the Parker Farms, Highland, Fritz, and Cook Hills side of town. She's just brought a lot to the district, so we're gonna certainly miss her, but we're gonna still have her involved in those activities. And again, the best wishes to all the retirees.
Okay. All right, any other comments for Ms. Ripa? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, let's see. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Sherri Domenello effective June 30, 2018. Sherri Domenello has been an elementary teacher since August 2009 for a total of 17 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Jenna Kemp effective June 30, 2018. Jenna Kemp has been a kindergarten and first grade teacher since August 2016.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I, nay? I can, I just forgot. Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that a leave of absence for Jessica Holloway be approved without pay in accordance with provision of the current teacher's con-
I forgot my-
Oh, sorry. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Danielle Gawinski effective June 30, 2018. Danielle Gawinski has been a grade four teacher since August 2016.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. All right. I make a motion that a leave of absence for Jessica Holloway be approved without pay in accordance with the provision of the current teacher's contract for June 1, 2018. The leave is personal and confidential. Jessica Holloway is requesting a one-day leave of absence. Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion that a, that a leave of absence for Eleanor Kirkpatrick be approved without pay in accordance with the provision of the current teacher's contract from May 30, 2018 through June 8, 2018.
Second.
Discuss. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Okay. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following candidates to teaching positions for the 2018-2019 school year contingent upon proper Connecticut certification as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Do I need to read the names?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Allison LaSoy, okay, thank you. Highland Elementary School Library and Media Specialist Allison LaSoy, Lyman Hall High School Agricultural Education Plant Science Kristen Mappe, Technology Education William Rich, District Math Teacher Rebecca Foltz, Technology Education Gabrielle Wazowski, Family Consumer Science Nicole Whitehouse, Family Consumer Science Justin Rache.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we have a, thank you. 12.16, A Presentation of Annual Teacher Evaluation Report.
Sorry, this is a report that, let me just get it in front of me, that personnel puts together for part of the teacher evalu-, thank you, teacher evaluation report that is submitted to the state. So it outlines everything that the Teacher Evaluation Committee has done throughout the school year, the professional development program, and it gives you just a general listing of all of the PD opportunities that were provided on not only the full days, but some of the self-directed and building-based days too. We have also started to include those in your board packet so that you can see the topics of professional development that are going on and how it aligns to current initiatives. And so, you know, throughout the year, you've been receiving those and will continue to receive those into the next school year as well.
Okay, very good, thank you. 13, item 13, Operations Committee, Mrs. LeVack?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
The Operations Committee meeting took place on May 14, 2018. The meeting minutes for the March 12, 2018, meeting were accepted and the Board of Education financial reports and cafeteria financial reports from March and April 2018 were reviewed in committee and accepted under the consent agenda this evening. The committee then addressed the request by the mayor regarding the voluntary return of $411,612 from the Board of Education 2018-2019 Town Council-approved allocation. The superintendent contacted our attorney with regard to this request. The attorney provided the following information for consideration. Section 10-222 of the General Statutes provides that, quote, "The money appropriated by any municipality for the maintenance of public schools shall be expended by and in the discretion of the Board of Education," end quote. After extensive discussion, the consensus was to place the $411,612 in a Board of Education contingency sub-account, and this action was approved under the consent agenda this evening. The Board previously voted to use $927,271 of unencumbered funds to address strategic plan items, leaving an unencumbered fund balance in the amount of $808,629. Consensus was taken to utilize $278,900 of unencumbered funds to address additional items. The vote regarding this consensus item will take place at a special Board of Education meeting scheduled for next week. Item 13.2, Discussion and Update on Consulting Services Firm for the School Facilities Study. Dr. Menzo?
Yes, last week, the Board of Education, there was a subcommittee that interviewed four candidates. Part of the big process is there's a Part A, which is interview, where you're able to score the candidates on their background, their interview, their knowledge, their skill. And then Part B is opened, that's the confidential sealed portion, which is the financial implications, was opened last Friday. And the two scores are put together and then we're told which one is the successful candidate based on those two scores. This evening, we're sharing with you and there's no action to be taken because we just have to sign off that this is, this was one of our, from what I understand, one of the committee's top choices, is there's, it was Malone and McGroom, who was the consultant firm that was not only high scoring, had high scores for the interview process, the qualifications, but also was, combined with the actual cost, the highest score overall. So what we would do is now sign off, this is normal process. We're just, this is a little bit more public for us than usual. It's just the fact that we know that this is a community concern. Traditionally, we don't bring these to the Board to share to this extent, but we did want to bring this publicly this evening to let you know that the process was an open process. It was a well-vetted process on the part of the volunteers in the Board of Education. And again, the last part, the financial, was taken care of by the town. They do all the tabulations, we just get that information. So now, what we'll do is we'll sign the paperwork, have the town begin to execute a contract, and then we'll be sitting down, I know Mr. Barone and I will be sitting down with them to start coming up with a plan and timeline. They did provide a timeline as a sample, and so now we need to hone in on that and make sure that we're having it clearly address all the needs that we had outlined in our proposal. So I don't know if anyone who is on the interviews wanted to comment or anything to that effect.
We felt very comfortable with the firm because they do have a history with the town. It's the same firm that actually did the new firehouse and did some other work for the town and has some other experience. So we felt between the architects and the other parties that they had involved that we would be in good hands.
Good. All right, so we just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. The other item I just want to mention, and I was going to interject and I didn't want to interrupt Ms. LeVack, she was on a roll, with her operations meeting update. Just while she explained in that operations update that the Board did take consensus and it was approved tonight, that the $411,612 would go into a contingency, a sub-contingency account. As most of the people in Wallingford know, the Town Council did meet last week and at their meeting, there was a vote to remove that money from our budget as we had recommended back in April. And so that is where we stand right now. So that, while we have it on record that that was what your wishes were, in the absence of the Town Council having acted on the budget on its first date of setting the budget and taking the money back, we do want that on record. However, we all know that that money is now not been allocated as we had requested back in April. So if something should change, we will let you know, but that's also why we're not officially approving our budget this evening, is because I know that being here with Ms. McKay and Mr. Ross last Tuesday night, there was still some discussion, it appeared, that would occur over the next two weeks regarding whether or not the action that was taken last night is an action that could stand, or, excuse me, that not last night, last Tuesday night could actually stand. So we didn't want to, as an administrative team, and Mr. Barone and I spoke about this, we didn't want you to approve a budget with one number just to potentially have to come back in another couple of weeks to prove it with a different number. So we wanted to take the gift of time that we've been given and come back with the number that the Board can accept that's based on the Town Council's final approval. So I just wanted to clarify that because traditionally, we've gotten into a pattern of approving our budget this evening. It's not because of anything other than we want to be mindful of the discussions that may be still occurring at the town level.
Thank you for that explanation. Item 14, New Business, I do not believe we have any. Item 15, Administration Report, Dr. Menzo?
Yes, I have a few additional donations that come under the $500 threshold, that's why. And these were all for the recent international night that we had at Lyman Hall, it was a district international event. So we have Mazacato's Bakery that donated some baked goods, some cookies at $65. We had Mo's Southwest Grill, which made a donation. We also have East Center Market that made a donation. Tata's Restaurant made a donation. So we thank all of those different restaurants for helping the event. As we heard earlier, Pencheros made a sizable donation also to assist with the evening. I also have one other donation in the amount of $300 that was donated by Kelly Legasi, who is, works for Aetna. And so this is coming from the Aetna Foundation for the Mark Tishian High School Girls Basketball Team in the amount of $300. So we thank those individuals for their contributions. As was mentioned a couple of times this evening by a couple of different people, we are going to have a proclamation by the mayor this Thursday at 4 o'clock at Hubcap Wallingford on 128 Center Street, where the mayor will be signing a proclamation naming or identifying Wallingford as a STEM town. And STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. And so we're very excited, this was an initiative that I had reached out to the mayor about a few months back in conjunction with the Department Economic Development Commission, the EDC. So Tim Ryan has been a big partner in this initiative as well as local businesses, our staff. We have a parent member of our group, and we also have community college and university involvement. The group is going to expand because this just recently, within the last three to, probably three, little over three months, has come together. But our goal is to have the proclamations that we address the problem that we're seeing not only nationally, not only in Connecticut, but also in Wallingford, which is there are many open jobs in the fields that encompass STEM. So we need to make certain that we are continuing to offer our students opportunities in these areas to determine whether or not it's something that they could have a passion in and something that they could then leverage for life after high school. So what we like to do is, again, have the proclamation, and in the summer, our students in kindergarten through eighth grade will be getting challenges on a regular basis, emailed home through their, to their parents, design challenges dealing with different STEM activities. They also will be getting their governor's reading packet as well as mathematics packet to show the connections of the different areas. Our fifth graders will be, with the hard work of Ms. Veu and Ms. O'Donnell, will be launching into an online platform. Parents will be receiving information on this in the coming weeks, that they will voluntarily sign up their children to participate in an online platform called TechTRIP, which allows our students to have access to about a dozen different modules that relate to different science principles, ranging from different aspects of coding to animation and a variety of other topics. So it'll be voluntary. We're hopeful that, again, through our updates on a regular basis over the summer, we get some students to participate in the modules. You don't need to be a science teacher, so if your child likes to do these things, you just need, you could do it along with them at home. And we're gonna try to have a celebration planned for August where all the students who have participated in either the challenges we send home or the challenges that are done through TechTRIP, we could celebrate the students throughout our district, so we'll keep you posted on that. The online service will then expand in the fall to students in fourth grade as well as students in fifth grade, because the fifth grade now getting it will be sixth graders and then also seventh and eighth. So the program will be from fourth through eighth grade. This is a partnership with this company, so again, it's, it's a partnership that we're very fortunate to have. And I'll leave it at that. Other opportunities, yesterday was the parade. While it was a little rainy at the beginning, it was a little misty. It did go very, very well. All four bands, marching bands, were very successful in their performances. Dag Moran, Lyman Hall, which- Lyman Hall, which I got to march in front of, and Sheehan. So it was a great day. Started off with a beautiful ceremony at Dutton Park where Lisa Zokwitz-Ives was the singer. She is one of our music teachers at the elementary school, and Sheehan participated in accompanying her in the National Anthem and also in God Bless America. So the parade was a great success, the new route, or the temporary new route was interesting. I liked it because you got a little bit more steps in, but it was, it was a good opportunity, and I was really pleased at the turnout of our students in the band because it is difficult for families on a holiday weekend. And then it seemed like there was a good turnout on the parade route also. Just a couple of other things, today, we received some news from the State Department of Education. I don't know, Ms. Latour, do you want to share the good news about the grant?
So our CTE coordinator applied for a Perkins Enhancement Grant, which was approved, for about $29,000, which will go towards a lot of culinary equipment for baking, et cetera. Mr. Covey has been wonderful in researching every avenue to apply for grants that he can, and so this is a, this is a nice, nice time of year to get the news, and we will spend the summer working with our teachers to spend the money, because we have to spend it by the end of September.
So this will complement our culinary program in existence at Lyman Hall to get into the baking element. That was one of our goals, it was part of our plan to really expand in that area. So I didn't realize how expensive large, large mixers are, but they are very expensive, and something that you wouldn't put on your counter at home. So we're looking forward to that opportunity, that's for certain in many ways. We also, I just wanted to say that obviously, sports seasons are concluding, we have a lot of teams that were in different levels of play still, so we want to congratulate our athletes. Unfortunately, the end of the year is very difficult for us to get to a lot of the sporting events because we're with you, doing a lot of activities in the evening. Lyman Hall, I just do want to say that I was able to see Sister Act, and it was a phenomenal show. And I also want to say that Lyman Hall this Friday has its Pops concert. So it's band, string, chorus, vivace, all the different musical groups, and it's a great event, so if you're, if you were looking for something to do on a Friday night, that really is a great way to see our students and their talent. It's 7:30 this Friday. A couple of their quick things, again, as I said earlier, I want to thank our maintenance staff, but I also would be remiss if I didn't thank our IT staff for their work during the storm. Karen knows that she's not allowed to ever put weather on our central office agenda again, because she did like the week before, we brought it up and then we had a tornado. But it's okay, or microburst. Karen and her staff, we are so fortunate to have that team working. They kept us up to date, I think it was like Sunday at 5:00, I got an email followed by a text by, you know, basically like every other message I could get. The phones are really working at Pontill. There's internet at Pontill. Because Karen had activated, as she would, as we would expect, knowing her so well, she was able to get us all of the cell phones in place just in case we had to use cell phones at Pontill. We had, she had worked with Dave Menschur and Food Services to make sure that we could do reimbursable meals for free reduced lunches. We had it all together. And again, it was because of Karen's hard work and her team and her leadership that it all came through and came out without having to use any of those things. Or even Oakdale, because we had that in the back of our minds too, just in case, because we were not canceling school on that Monday. No way were we canceling school. But again, I want to thank Karen and her whole team for their hard work, because it really, and it's great when you have somebody like Karen and also Mark D'Abtula in maintenance and the staff that get along and are able to really collaborate and support each other. That is what makes a big difference, and I think we're very fortunate in this town. I know, I'm very fortunate as superintendent to have people like that in our departments. I'd also like to say thank you to the other town departments, because I know if you didn't have electricity or if you had a tree down, you probably didn't think they were working fast enough for you because it was down in your backyard, but there were a lot of trees down. There were a lot of issues in town. And I have to say, the Public Works Department did a phenomenal job, as always, our partners at Police and Fire, and the Electric Company. We forget about them, but they're kind of important. And so it was, I really do have to say, under the leadership of the mayor, we met on a regular basis to review what was going on, collect the data, and actually be able to compile that data so that we can move forward in preparation for school. So again, great team effort on the part of everyone, and I appreciate that support. Last but not least, just to again publicly state it, if it hasn't been, if you didn't watch any of the four TV stations last week, you do not know that our last day of school is still Friday, June 22nd, as well as graduation is still Friday, June 22nd. It's a minimum day of school for students and staff. Graduation is in the evening at both high schools. So I just wanted to share that just to make sure we're all on the same page. If you didn't see it on Channel 8, Channel 30, Channel 3, or 61. So, thank you.
Get them all in there, Dr. Menzo. Okay, so we'll wrap up our meeting with just going over our announcements and meeting dates. Tuesday, June 5th, which is a departure for us. Usually our meetings are on Monday, but we have the CNA pinning ceremony on Monday the 4th. So our instructional committee meeting will be on Tuesday, June 5th, 6:30 at the Board of Ed Conference Room at 100 South Turnpike Road. Monday, June 11th is our Operations Committee meeting at 6:30, also Board of Ed Conference Room, 100 South Turnpike Road. And then lastly, our televised meeting here at Town Hall is on Monday, June 18th, at, here at the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers at 6:30. And with that, this meeting's adjourned. Have a nice evening, everybody.